He had another one?
Yeah.
Yeah, he was whole there in first year. I'm trying to get shorter and shorter. I did that Facebook Thursday. I get shorter. And everyone basically just sort of seems like it's still too long. This is good. Go on, David. Yeah. Advisory is discipline everybody's own system. Yeah. Get your board order. Who's the senior board? I don't know. What's the chair? What's going on here? Well, it can't start without Paul, so you know that. Finally beginning. There's no official, uh... There's not like a single person out there who was like, give him a vote this way. Dan Brown, Mr. Sir. No, not even a little bit.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to call your attention to the fact that we've noticed that some people came in the back door. If you came in the back door and you did not register or check in, please take the time now to go do that. The check-in is in the engineering hallway up front there. Thank you.
I just texted Kevin. I think, I thought Dan was coming, right?
I don't think so. I said, well, I'm not going because I have funeral event. I think it's gonna get, but I don't know till when. He asked me the kids, and I did say, like, I'll go. I'm also gonna try and get hot.
Hey, Rhonda. How's it going?
Where are we?
Yeah. He's saying.
All the fans, so. You're not the one worried about John?
Yeah.
So I have tomorrow at nine o'clock.
Yeah, no, I don't think that's how I really want. They didn't want to do it, so.
Oh, and then they got moved to...
Oh, it is moved?
Well, I don't know.
I don't, I haven't either watched it.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I removed myself from over there.
I know. And it, it says it too. It says, like, but then, like, after, I mean, because I just, I still, I told you, but I also told that group because I knew more than them. They're like, I wasn't be there tomorrow. And, um, like, he was still trying to schedule.
We get like... Right, like, we get them. I'm around, so that's all it says.
They want, but I just don't see, kind of get the purpose or see the purpose. But I am gonna try to be polite. I just... Oh, I could rather not be able to see it. You got it, Dan.
There you go. Hey, Dan. How's everything going?
Good, how about you? For being present, I call this special town meeting to order. The warrant has been properly executed. Welcome to special town meeting. Thanks for coming out on a cold and rainy December Monday. It's good to see this level of participation. I welcome those at home watching remotely. Uh, it's great to have you participating or understanding what's going on, but remember, your vote only counts if you're here at the meeting. On the way in, you should have received your warrant with the motions and recommendations of the advisory committee, along with some other material that was out there. A few things on the layout of the room. The exits over here on the side are well marked. Restrooms are out in the common area where you came in. And please take a moment to make sure your mobile phone's on silent. I know you're not gonna shut it off, but at least make sure it's on. Uh, excepting those that are here for town function, if you're not a registered voter, we have the marked section. If you are a registered voter and ended up in the orange section, you need to move out of the places where they're, where it's tagged. Uh, as we go through the business here, if you'd like to speak, and I certainly encourage everyone to do so, come to one of the microphones here and wait your turn until I call on you. Or if it's difficult to, uh, to get there, we can have a microphone brought to you. Each time you speak, every time you speak, name and address before you start, even if you're speaking again and again and again. Um, if you have a question, you direct it to me and I'll seek an answer for you. It's in the back and forth debate. We seek out answers, we get questions responded to. If you're not clear on procedure, don't let that stop you. If you wanted to amend or ask a question or weren't sure exactly the right way to phrase it, don't let that stop you. Come to the microphone, say your piece when it's your turn, and we'll figure it out. We want everybody to feel comfortable participating. As always, I will not tolerate any personal attacks or improper language. You've heard me say it many times. The rules were written hundreds of years ago and give me some pretty archaic authority to keep order. So with that, we will begin, Mr. Nimus Gern.
Mr. Moderator, Paul Nimus Gern, 151 Kendallwood Lane. I move to waive the reading of the articles.
Thank you, Mr. Nimus Gern. Mr. Nimus Gern has moved to waive the reading of the articles. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are not gonna read the articles. So we will begin with Article One. Amend South Shore Regional Vocational School District Agreement.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
Manual Doctor, Chair of the Advisory Committee. We move that the town accept this article as printed in the warrant. A little background on the advisory committee's role. The role of the advisory committee is to provide town meeting with recommendations and commentary for each warrant article. To do this, we meet with article sponsors, town department heads, appointed and elected leaders, board and committee volunteers, and stakeholders. The recommendations and commentary are meant to summarize and communicate the large amount of available information to help town meeting make better informed decisions. All documents available to the advisory committee, video recordings of our meetings, and these recommendations and commentary are available on the town's website. The issue of this article, the South Shore Regional Vocational School District seeks to amend its regional agreement regarding how debt obligations are divided between the member towns. There are currently nine member towns. The current approach divides the debt share based on the ratio of pupil enrollments amongst the member towns, calculates pupil enrollments as the average of the last three years before the debt is approved, and then uses that debt ratio as a static apportionment for the duration of the debt repayment without any further adjustment or recalculation. Under the proposed change, pupil enrollment will be based on the average of the last four years instead of three, and will be recalculated each year on a rolling basis using the most recent four prior years. The amended agreement also changes how to calculate Marshfield's debt share. Marshfield was added to the district in 2023. The current agreement calculates Marshfield's pupil enrollment for purposes of dividing debt based on the immediately prior single year until fiscal year 2030, and then Marshfield's share is set permanently in fiscal year 2030 based on the pupil enrollment from the prior year. Under the proposed change, Marshfield's pupil enrollment will be based on the immediately prior single year until fiscal year 2033, when it will be based on an average of the last four years and be updated each year thereafter on a rolling basis along with the rest of the member towns. The amended agreement also provides flexibility should other towns join the district in the future. As to our assessment, using a rolling calculation of pupil enrollment instead of a static calculation benefits Hanover because our pupil enrollment over the last three years has been growing and is higher than historical trends. If the district were to incur debt in the next two years, Hanover would likely be obligated to a higher portion of the debt over the course of the repayment than it would under the amended approach using a rolling calculation. Using Marshfield's immediately prior single year to calculate their pupil enrollment through fiscal year 2033 instead of fiscal year 2030 benefits Hanover because it is expected that Hanover's, that Marshfield's pupil enrollment will continue increasing consistently as they have only recently joined the district. If the district were to calculate Marshfield's debt share in fiscal year 2030 instead of 2033, based on multiple prior years, it is expected that Hanover would be obligated to a larger share of the debt. We recommend that town meeting approve the amendment as it is expected to benefit Hanover and result in a smaller debt obligation.
Questions or comments under Article One. Seeing none, this motion requires a simple majority to pass. All those in favor of the motion of the advisory committee will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So carries unanimous. Article Two. Appropriate Funds Conceptual and Design B Everett Hall Field and Sylvester School Field. Mr. Scarpelli.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Bill Scarpelli, 40 Hammerhook Drive, uh...
You gotta get right on that microphone.
I'm Bill Scarpelli, 40 Hammerhook Drive, Community Preservation Committee. With respect to Article Two, uh, the CPC met at a public meeting at Town Hall on October 10th, 2024 in accordance with Chapter 44B, the Community Preservation Act, at which this article was approved by the committee. This funding application was submitted by the CPC for $60,000 to jumpstart the initial design phase of what, what we hope to be a transformational park at B Everett Hall Field. This is a necessary next step toward a design concept to be undertaken by park and landscape design professionals to provide us with a plan and project cost estimate to then enable us to present a warrant article for park construction funding in either fall 2025 or annual town meeting, May 2026. The CPC has as a goal the construction of a new park in the historic Hanover Center for our tricentennial in 2027. Our goal and vision is for a final design that will improve and reconstruct many of the current assets now present at the site and incorporate more passive landscape design features such as hills, trees, shrubbery, walking paths, lamp posts, benches, water features, and a pavilion with public restrooms and other amenities.
You'll sit? Oh, you're showing your slides.
The goal and vision is to design and create a multi-generational park, which residents deserve and can be proud of. A design still able to host Hanover Day celebrations. At the moment, these are mere wish list items, which need professional park designers to help us determine what is possible, considering boundaries, topography, wetlands, hydrology, and costs. What we know for sure is that we need the current site to be transformed into a park that serves a broader spectrum of the community, both young and old. A park that will be, will better serve youth athletic programs such as Babe Ruth baseball and fall football practices, new basketball courts, and an improved playground, perhaps pickleball courts, perhaps bocce courts. Over the past few decades, Hanover has had other transformational public work projects. A new police station, a new high school, a school addition at Center School, a library addition, Forge Pond Park. This project would be the next, but with a significant difference. No debt, no tax increase, and no bonding. We have the funds now in and for the design, and, and there's a likelihood that more money through the CPC will become available as that project progresses. The CPC respectfully recommends that the town vote to accept this article as printed. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town accept this article as printed in the warrant. The Community Preservation Committee, CPC, is seeking to use $60,000 from the Community Preservation Fund towards the development of a conceptual design for the redevelopment of B Everett Hall Field for passive and active recreational use. Each year, the town collects a 3% surcharge on property tax bills and sets aside the receipts into the Community Preservation Fund. These funds can only be used for open space, historic preservation, community housing, and recreation, as determined and managed by CPC. These funds cannot be used to offset the general operating budget or any other use outside of the CPA guidelines in any manner. The goal of this project is to complete a conceptual design through community engagement and input by fall 2025. Submit a request at either a special town meeting in 2025 or 2026 annual town meeting to fund shovel-ready plans based on the conceptual design. Submit a request at either special town meeting in 2026 or annual town meeting in '27 to fund the final project and finalize the project in time for Hanover's 300th anniversary. There is currently approximately $4 million in funds which could be made available for this project. Given our current budget challenges, it initially does not seem to be the best time to undertake a large costly project. However, CPA funds cannot be used towards our current budget challenges. This is thought, a thoughtfully staged project that will seek community engagement and input to redesign B Everett Hall Field for broad use in advance of our 300th anniversary. We recommend that town meeting approve this request as it is an appropriate and prudent use of our CPA funds, and said funds cannot be used any, uh, otherwise in any manner to address our current unrelated budget challenges.
Questions or comments? I'll come up here.
Heather Friedman, 42 Cross Street. If this goes through, I just wanted to, I believe that there is a very, very small amount of money in trust for the B Everett Hall Field. So if this project does end up going forward, it would be nice to see some of that being used.
Mr. Scarpelli, are you aware of a trust that could help support this in some way?
Yeah, I, I'm not, uh, familiar with any trust, but I'd love to hear more.
There are, it's very small. There are a number of trusts that are part of the Board of, um, Trust Fund Commissioners, but there has not been any members other than one member, um, for a number of years, so there have not been any meetings.
Well, I'm glad you brought it to our attention, Mr. Clanslow. Hopefully you can connect, uh, and find out what we've got here and how that would be done.
It's very, it's a very small amount.
Still helps, it all helps. Thank you. Further questions or comments under Article Two. Seeing none, this requires a simple majority. Oh, I'm sorry. Come on down.
Uh, Richard, Richard Lynch, 157 Briarwood Drive. Question on the CPA funds. Can they buy town meeting and vote by the residents? Can that money be re-appropriated for other purposes within the budget? Or is it definitive black and white that it can't be re-appropriated?
No.
It's definitive black and white, those four purposes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Coming for a question?
Tara Mustone, 31 Pond Brook Drive. Just a quick question. What are the, has the future operating costs of this project been looked at, like, over the next five, 10 years? What it will do for electricity, water, maintenance, lawn care, septic, anything like that? And it's, if it has been looked at or it has not been looked at, who pays for that? Is that coming out of our general budget? Or is it those funds come from the CPA and those additional expenses get paid out of the CPA funds?
It's a good question. Bill, any comment on that? I know you haven't had the design work done yet, but...
Yeah, that's a great question, but it, it is premature. We don't even have plans yet, but I can offer this, that presently, any of the maintenance that is, uh, conducted in, in, at that site, at B Everett Hall Field, in the, in the field behind Center School is, is performed by the DPW. So I presume that to some extent, probably a large extent, uh, the, uh, the DPW will continue to, to maintain the property unless there's a, a nonprofit established to assist in that regard. But, but for the rest of your question, we wouldn't have that information yet. That's why we're, we wanna retain professionals to give us that information.
Okay, so, but if you're thinking about proposing to add restrooms, like, that are in the fields...
I, I would recommend that you participate in the meetings that he's talking about as he's gonna have a year-long process if this goes through.
Okay.
To, to study it and...
Okay, thank you.
Don't really wanna give them back and forth to be. It's a very valid question, so an important one to get engaged in. You're next.
Hi, I'm Catherine Fitzgerald, um, at 80 Ridge Hill Drive. I am wondering if the new field would also have room for, um, areas for sports teams, since there's not a lot of those around in Hanover?
Bill?
Yeah, great question again. So, um, our, we don't know yet, but our goal, as we've talked to the other, uh, members of the community, is to, um, ideally move the current, uh, Babe Ruth, uh, field and move it to the back of the lot. But maybe in that location or elsewhere. And we, we're also, our goal, as communicated with the HYA folks, is to, uh, construct a, uh, in the outfield of the new baseball diamond, uh, a better field for the, for, uh, fall, uh, football practice for the youth, uh, um, football players. That would also be under the lights because they need lights there. It gets dark, uh, October, uh, November.
Thank you.
Come over here now.
Uh, yeah, Ben Johnson, 50 Dana Drive in Hanover. I'm the Commissioner of Hanover Youth Football. So we would support this, just, uh, if anyone's had kids in this town for, I don't know, 40 years. The fields down there are very, um, dilapidated. There's rocks in all the fields. We tackle every single play. The kids are down there. I generally have 150 kids for probably four days a week through the winter, well, through the fall, uh, into the early winter. And, um, really something needs to be addressed down there. So I think this is a really good, uh, way of hopefully improving these fields so the kids have a better environment to practice. And this, I'm also on the lacrosse board, and, um, it would be good to get, be able to relieve some of the pressure at Forge Field and maybe get lacrosse down there as well.
Thank you. Mr. Nimus Gern.
Paul Nimus Gern, 151 Kendallwood Lane. I'd like to, um, add that the, as a co-chair of the Hanover Day, we're very grateful that the, this committee has, um, kept us in mind as well as the youth sports. We feel like they're doing a very open process on looking for input. So if you do have input, please reach out to them, and, um, we 100% support what they're trying to do.
Further questions or comments? Article Two. Seeing none, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor of the motion of the advisory committee on Article Two will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So carries unanimous. Article Three. Establish Transfer Station Enterprise Fund.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town accept this article as printed in the warrant. This article asks town meeting a simple question. Does it want to continue receiving transfer station services through an enterprise fund model or stop receiving transfer station services completely? Given the town's rejection of the override last year, continued growth in town-wide shared expenses and pre-existing debt, we are unable to continue providing, providing our current services throughout the school municipal departments within the levy limit. The levy limit is the maximum amount of revenue that the town can raise in property taxes, and it cannot generally increase more than approximately 2.5% each year. We simply cannot collect enough revenue from property taxes to continue our current services. This means we must either make difficult decisions to cut services or find a creative solution to fund current services outside of property taxes. The town manager has submitted an operating budget that does not include approximately 1.6 million to fund the transfer station, but has provided a path to continue transfer station services through an enterprise fund. An enterprise fund model is where the cost of the services is covered directly by users of the service and not through property taxes. We currently use an enterprise fund for our water services. The cost to treat and provide water is paid directly by those who use the water and not from the general property taxes. There is no possible outcome of this article that will result in residents continuing to receive transfer station services funded through the general fund operating budget or in any other manner other than the currently proposed enterprise fund. There is no option to continue as is. Why is the transfer station not going to be funded through the general operating budget? The town manager removed the transfer station from the general operating budget, not based on an assessment of the value of the service, but instead because it is the only current service that is able to be continued through an enterprise fund. For example, there is no way to remove police, fire, or education services from the general operating budget and fund them through an enterprise fund. Given the inability to maintain current services within the levy limit, shifting the transfer station services to an enterprise fund model is the only realistic option of continuing our transfer station services. It benefits the town to remove the transfer station services from the general fund operating budget as the cost of the services has been increasing unsustainably at approximately 4.5% annually compared to the 2.5% limit under Prop 2.5. When costs for a service increase above 2.5%, it pressures other areas of the budget, and we have reached our breaking point. Instituting an enterprise fund will allow for greater funding and operational flexibility to react to the ever-changing landscape of solid waste management in order to keep the service available to Hanover residents. If town meeting approves the transfer station enterprise fund, the select board is responsible for determining the specific funding mechanism, whether a sticker fee or some other approach. We recommend that town meeting approve this request because the transfer station services are the only currently provided services which lend themselves well to an enterprise fund model, and this is the only path to continuing current transfer station services. Our town is already experienced at providing services through an enterprise fund, as seen in the water enterprise fund, and there are limited downsides as the expenses will be covered by the actual users. covered by the actual users. If town meeting does not approve this article, it is fully expected that transfer station services will end at the end of the fiscal year on June 30th, 2025.
2023?
Twenty-five.
Five.
Twenty-five. Point twenty-three.
Questions or comments under Article Three. And before we start questions, let me just say, when you ask a question, you ask your question and we seek an answer. You don't get to stay at the microphone and ask a follow-up. It's just not how the process works. If you'd like to ask a second question, you can wait for the people to ask their first questions and then ask again. It's just kind of how it goes. So, we'll start up here.
Don Packer.
I'm sorry. Pause. I forgot. Mr. Colangelo is going to make a presentation.
I'll be brief. Thank you, Doug. Joe Colangelo, Town Manager, 190 Winter Street. Hanover's transfer station plays an important role in this town. Personally, I look forward to my weekend dump runs. Grabbing Duncan on the way, waving to the gatehouse attendant, seeing people I know. I even factor in how suitable a vehicle might be for hauling trash when purchasing a family car. Historically, even though Hanover is one of, a very small percentage of municipal transfer stations throughout the Commonwealth that does not charge an entrance fee, just whispering about the possibility of a nominal entrance, entrance fee, let alone a more material fee, has been met with resistance and quickly discarded. It is with this context and a tremendous amount of deference to the importance of community norms and traditions that I proposed a fiscal year 2026 general fund operating budget without one cent of the projected $1.6 million required to fund the transfer station, thus closing the operation completely starting July 1st, 2025, unless 100% of the funding can be secured from another source. To that end, I propose an alternative funding mechanism to allow Hanover's municipal transfer station to remain open, if that is what is desired by this community, by asking town meeting voters to approve an enterprise fund as a 100% fee-supported standalone business of the town. This would be similar in structure to Hanover's Water Enterprise Fund. Over the past few months, the Budget Director, Mr. Hoyes, and I have developed three unique funding concepts and modeled how fees could be structured if voters support the creation of this enterprise fund. The first concept charges an annual permit fee only. The second concept would charge users an annual permit fee and implement a pay-as-you-throw mechanism. The third concept would be a pay-as-you-throw program only. Under all three of these scenarios, using sensible forecasts, including factoring up to a 60% drop in participation rates among, amongst current household users, we have a reasonable belief that this transfer station enterprise fund can sustain itself in the year with retained earnings and raise the necessary capital to pay for operations, at least for a few years. Under all three models, the cost to the average user of the transfer station will be around $325 annually, which is likely less than what a private hauling contract could offer. Whether we can keep fees at price points that enough residents will choose to pay for a municipal option over the simplicity of private curbside disposable is not something we can guarantee into the future. Why are such radical changes to the transfer station being proposed now? There are two fundamental factors at play.
Can you give me another slide there, Steve? Okay, thank you.
First, on January 1st, 2018, China's national sword policy went into effect, which placed a series of regulations on the imports of recyclables and waste accepted by China. Certainly, the town of Hanover has zero control over China, China's national policies, but this one in particular impacts Hanover in a significant way. Prior to 2018, there was a much larger global market for waste from the United States. Hanover's cost per tonne to dispose of waste from the transfer, transfer station was $79.92. And since that time, the cost per tonne has increased by 52% to $121.58 and climbing. Second, with the cost escalation due to the impacts of China's sword policy and Massachusetts State Law, Proposition 2.5, there is no possible way for the town of Hanover to continue providing transfer station services within the tax levy without drastically reducing and eliminating other services. Just to put it into perspective, what it would take to continue transfer station operations within Hanover's general fund operating budget, we would need to completely eliminate and close the Council on Aging, the Library, and eliminate all planning, Board of Health, Conservation, and Inspection Services. Or look for similarly drastic service reductions to Hanover Police, Hanover Fire, and Hanover Public Schools. It is simply not practical or responsible to consider these sorts of cuts. Hanover's current budget situation, with the noticeable service reductions that have started to surface in all town departments, including our public schools, in this fiscal year, pale in comparison to the service reductions we will be facing in subsequent years, minus an approved levy limit increase by ballot vote. Long gone are the days of working with the Select Board and the Advisory Committee on whether we can save $1,000 with bulk office supply orders. I'm quoting here to conclude from one of the newest members of the Advisory Committee, who is well-known, respected, respected in town, Dr. Rab. During conversations that I have had with him about the budget in general and the transfer station specifically, he has stated to me, "We have seven-figure problems requiring seven-figure solutions." Eliminating the transfer station from the general operating budget and moving it into an enterprise is fund is such a solution, not just for fiscal year 2026, but for the sake of the sustainability of all town services into the future, and I encourage voters to approve Transfer Station Enterprise Fund.
Thank you, Doug. Thanks, Joe. Thanks for your patience, Mr. Packer. No, you're going to pass? Okay, we'll come over here.
Steve Friedman, 42 Old Cross Street. So regarding Article Three, Mass. General Law requires that towns provide a trash removal option for residents. This can be in the form of a transfer station funded by tax dollars and a combination of fees, a transfer station run through an enterprise fund funded by fees and potentially tax dollars, or private pickup, likely funded solely by charges to residents based on a town-wide rate agreement. If Article Three passes, it gives the town manager the authority to set up the transfer station as an enterprise fund, dependent on a fee structure adopted by the Select Board and an annual expenditure or budget approved at annual town meeting. It is not simply saying transfer station or no transfer station, even though that is the current intent which the town manager has stated, absent any majority direction from the Select Board to reinsert the transfer station costs within the fiscal year 2026 operating budget, or to advocate for an override budget and levy limit increase specifically to include the transfer station as a service paid for by property taxes. Our current transfer station setup is unlikely to be financially sustainable for the town under our current Prop 2.5 requirements. By allowing this transfer station to be run as an enterprise fund allows the town to continue at the moment to provide the service without reducing costs in other areas, as well as minimize the increase of a potential override. Please note, however, that this does not reduce the expense to the majority of residents. It just shifts how residents will be billed for this service. In addition, no residents will see a reduction to their taxes for this reason, since this reduced cost is being utilized to minimize reductions to other town services. From an individual resident perspective, this will cost the majority of residents $300 to $400 annually, or approximately a 3.5% to 4.5% increase compared to an average household tax bill of $9,000. So if we had a budget that stayed within the Prop 2.5, you should add 4% to that for how the impact of the trash removal will be handled, whether through an enterprise fund or private pickup. The commentary provided by the Advisory Committee on this that states that "There is no possible outcome of this article that would result in residents continuing to receive transfer station services funded through the general fund operating budget or in any other manner other than currently proposed enterprise fund," there is no option to continue as is, is not fully accurate. As I mentioned earlier, that there are other options. There are also concerns brought up by the town manager and transfer station subcommittee on whether the enterprise fund will be sustain, sorry, sustainable long-term. However, approval of this option does provide the town manager and Select Board flexibility in addressing our challenging financial situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Other questions or comments?
Eric Grun, 70 Heritage Way. I have two questions. I've heard and understood everything you've said, and I appreciate the town manager's introduction. Just very simply, for myself, I might have missed it, and others, what is the definition of an enterprise fund? And I have a second question. There's mentioned the $325 annually, and that I think that was a 60%. I don't know exactly how it was generated, but I was trying to do it. $1.6 million for the cost, and I tried to, I just divided 325 into that and got to around 5,000 households. So kind of the, my two questions are the definition of an enterprise fund, and second is just the math to get the 325. I think that's annually per household or per participant, but thank you very much.
We'll seek an answer, and I might, we might want to put back up the table that was on, can we go back to that one that showed like different percentage participation? Yeah, that one. Yeah, good. So Joe, you, or Jim?
Jim Hoyes, serving as Budget Director. So let me answer the second question you asked, and I'll let the town manager talk about the first on the exact Mass. General Law on enterprise. The model we looked at was trying to build some favorable scenarios. And so the chart that you see, you can see across the top our participation rates. That's the percent of households who currently use the transfer station that would continue. So you can look across the chart at various levels, and right now, there's 4,000 households, unique households, who get a free sticker. There's about 8,700 stickers that are given out. Many homes have more than one. But we use the 4,000 as a baseline. In the 60% scenario, you assume 60% of those still buy a sticker at $325. It assumes the transfer station is open three days a week in that scenario. That's what runs down the one side of that column, looking at the current five-day operation to a one-day operation. And anything in the green shows that you're making money, so to speak, which means you're generating retained earnings, like we strive to do on the Water Enterprise. So the 325 is the accumulation of the 60% participation rate, the reduced number of days, the reduced number of people using the transfer station means your solid waste costs go down, some of your recycling costs go down, and so it's an intertwined model that spits out these particular retained earnings. And this is not a budget discussion tonight. In May, we would need to decide how much retained earnings we wanted to shoot for. I was just trying to build scenarios that in the majority of cases, you show that this is feasible, assuming these participation rates. If 10% of people participate, there's not really a model that works, and I think you'd say, well, residents have clearly stated that they're not interested in the transfer station. But at rates that are on the chart on the screen, you can even go below that a little bit if you are at 1.5 or one day per week opening, and it still is a viable option based on these assumptions. Hopefully that helps.
Mr. Colangelo?
Town Council, Dan Brown. An enterprise fund, in terms of the definition, so it's not, it's not a separate legal entity from the town. It's a fund operated by the town. It basically establishes a separate accounting and financial mechanism for delivering certain municipal services, and it's based on user fees, other, other types of creative funding. I believe the water, I believe the water in, in Hanover is done through, you know, a similar fund, another, another enterprise fund.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
Mr. Moderator, David Green, 595 Circuit Street. Advisory Committee commentary. I don't agree with it. I think there are other alternatives than the enterprise account, and I'm going to speak to that now. Mr. Moderator, what I'd like to do is give a commentary, and then I will have a, an alternative motion or an amended motion. Enterprise account. Enterprise account, I am not for an enterprise account. I am for fees. I think that the town has significant financial problems. Been shown very nicely here, but to me, from my experience in serving in town government, enterprise count is the beginning of the end. And, you know, if you look at the dump, or the transfer station, sorry, I use the word dump and transfer station, it's been around for 50 years. It has probably been the most studied thing in the town of Hanover for, for alternative revenue. It probably ranks up there with study of UFOs. Every single year, it comes up, should we charge at the dump? And I just want to take you down memory lane real quick. 2008, 2008 was a really bad year for the town of Hanover. Stock market crashed 50%, took five years for the stock market to recover. We had unfunded SIC liability, $3 million. State aid was cut, the Quinn bill was cut by Governor Patrick. Commercial growth on 53 was stagnant. There was no commercial growth. So 2008, the town of Hanover is really in a difficult situation. I was on the Board of Selectmen at the time, and our government was different. Our government was not a town manager former government. We had elected officials that ran the Board of Public Works. They ran the day-to-day of the transfer station, they ran the day-to-day of the enterprise account in the water department, and we were scrambling to try to find alternative revenue sources. So we brought the elected officials, the Board of Public Works, that ran the DPW, ran the transfer station, and said, "What do you think? Do we do an enterprise account?" All three of them said, "No, it's the beginning of the end. It'll be the beginning of the end. We manage the water enterprise account. We see how that works. Don't do it." So in difficult times, it always comes up and it gets, and it gets looked at. The challenge that I see with an enterprise account is you have very subjective accounting practices. And I'll give you an example that happened in our own town. So our water enterprise account. Our water enterprise account, as everybody understands, you get, you pay for all of the services associated with it. Lo and behold, we're in a town meeting, and we decide to build a water treatment plant on Broadway. Water Commissioner stands up and says, "We need this amount of money. We don't need all the money to do the program." What we've been doing is overcharging you on your water rates and putting the money in a savings account in anticipation of capital projects that aren't, aren't approved by town meeting. And town meeting went out of their mind over it. So my point again is, it's very subjective accounting practices that will be the end of the enterprise account. You're going to get fluctuations in revenue. People will start self-selecting out. As, as our town manager pointed out, I can't, he can't hold the price. He doesn't know what's going to happen in the future. People will start buying less stickers. People will self-select out. So the price of the sticker will increase. So what you see today most likely will be the least expensive sticker you see going forward. So what I am going to propose, Mr. Town Manager, and sorry for droning on, I just want to get my editorial out, what I am proposing is a simple sticker fee. my editorial out, what I am proposing is a simple sticker fee. I gave you a copy of the, the substitute main motion, is that the route you'd like to go?
That we'll work on.
But essentially, what I am proposing is I'm taking out the enterprise language, I'm putting in a sticker fee. The executive branch can determine what the sticker fee should be. Simply come back to town meeting in May, they can do what they want to do, start charging for it now, under my, under my substitute main motion. And then this body will determine, will ratify if they agree with the, with the, the executive branch. So that's essentially what my motion is. And, and just in closing, before I go to my note, I believe that there's an old saying, that town meeting is always right. And I think that town meeting needs to find the sweet spot of the sticker on what we should be contributing to the general fund with that sticker. And again, I think we really need a sticker. I am, I am definitely for that. I'm just not for the enterprise account, because I believe that it's the beginning of the end. And I believe let the legislative body, each of you sitting here, decide what that sticker should be, and don't have it decided on, well, we got to buy, you know, the dump truck plows the dump, so now we need to buy a dump truck under that enterprise account. Let's just let town meeting decide it. So do you want me to read my?
If you would, and slightly change what you have typed on the piece of paper for the substitute motion, starting with, I move that, and limiting the word will.
I move that the town will establish a fee structure for the transfer station, comma, with the understanding that the town may collect fees for fiscal year 2026 in fiscal year 2025, and that such fees shall be deposited into the town's general account.
Do I have a second? Questions or commentary? We are going to be commenting on Mr. Green's substitute motion until we finish that and vote on the substitute main motion. If it passes, it passes, and if it fails, we go back to the original main motion. Do you have commentary from the advisory committee?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
I would just ask town council to give his thoughts on the ability to set and modify fees at this special town meeting, given our bylaws.
Are you asking whether I consider this to be an in-order substitute motion?
No, no, I want to, no, the, the substitute motion, my understanding, is that it authorizes sticker fees to be set by the select board.
Prior to the annual town meeting?
Prior to the annual town meeting. And I want to know if we could hear from town council as to whether or not that is in line with our bylaws.
That's a good question, may take a minute to look into it, Dar.
Yeah, yeah, just give us a minute.
Sure. For those in the audience, we passed a bylaw some number of years ago, that any time a fee is going to be instituted or changed, that it comes to here, the town meeting, to approve how much that fee is. And I believe the gist of Mr. Doctor's question is, can we authorize the select board to start collecting a fee when we didn't establish in the warrant that we were going to establish a new fee? Really, it's more of a question of timing, Mr. Green, I think. You could certainly proceed with a revised version of your motion if we get a different answer.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
While town council's looking into that, I will say that the advisory committee did look into the possibility of fees, and given the exact bylaw that the moderator mentioned, the challenge is that we cannot currently set or change fees other than at our town meeting. With an enterprise fund model, you can change those fees dynamically. So if there's an increase in the cost to dispose of a certain item, and that changes significantly halfway through the year, we could adjust the price for that, that we would charge out to residents. And that could happen very quickly. That can't happen under the current bylaws unless we go to special town meeting. So that was one of the concerns that the advisory committee had. Besides gutting almost the entirety of the town side of services, the other concern of keeping this within the general budget was that we would not be able to adjust fees dynamically quickly enough than we would be able to do with an enterprise fund.
Can you answer that?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, I agree with that, and also, I think if, you won't be able to set a fee prior to town meeting, right, which is part of the issue. With an enterprise fund, you can set that, you can set that fee, select, no, select board, and through the town manager, and then obviously, that part of the budget, the entire budget is going to have to be approved by town meeting, where substitute motions could be made, et cetera.
So then on Mr. Green's motion, you're saying he could move that the town establish a fee structure for the transfer station, but he can't give the town power to collect fees for fiscal '26 in fiscal '25, because we won't have a town meeting to set such Mr. Green, are you interested in making a modified motion with that in mind?
Sure, if that's the path of least resistance, I'll do it. But I would just like to point out, and I know you don't like people going back and forth, but in your main article, you talk about a fee in there. You haven't determined a fee, we're not voting on a fee today. You've talked about a fee that will need to be ratified at the next town meeting, so I'm not sure how that's different than what I'm proposing. I'm proposing that the executive branch goes back, determines what the, either it's a sticker, or it's a bucket bag, whatever they determine, they implement it, and then town meeting ratifies it. If town meeting doesn't like it, then, then, you know, something happens from there.
I will seek an answer, but the way it's been presented is, my understanding is that the, the enterprise fund absolves you of the coming to town meeting to set the fees.
So, sorry.
Is that correct?
That's correct. Under the enterprise fund model, the select board, in this case, would be able to set a fee, say, March, April, even start collecting on that fee prior to town meeting. Town meeting, for some reason, you know, didn't adopt the budget or whatever, you know, would start sending the money, money back. But under the enterprise model, absolutely, the select board not only would have the ability to, but they would be encouraged to set the fee come this March or, or April, prior to town meeting.
And you're saying it would not be ratified?
And further, it's correct that the fees in an enterprise fund do not, are, are immune from the budget, from the bylaw that says?
Correct. They'd be select, but just by the select board, just the way our water fees are set now.
Just one additional thing, I know the accounting system was, was questioned. I'm obviously not the accountant, but I know that there are fairly strict guidelines on enterprise accounting as well, so it just offers that extra flexibility for the setting of the rate and figuring that out.
So given, Mr. Green, that it appears that the term enterprise and the operation under an enterprise fund allows them to set fees without coming back under bylaw, do you want to make your motion without, without that?
I, yes, let's let the debate happen. What, what I'd like to do is just, is strike out us being able to collect now, and being able to collect in fiscal year 2026.
So you move that the town establish a fee structure for the transfer station with the understanding that the town may collect fees for fiscal year 2025 and beyond, oh, 2026, sorry, 2026 and beyond?
Correct. And such fees shall be deposited into the general account.
And that such fees shall be deposited in the town's general fund.
Can I make a comment?
Mr. Hoyes.
I think one of the other considerations is thinking of timing, because getting the enterprise fund decision tonight, yes or no, allows then a budget to be set if the answer is yes, and that budget is voted at town meeting, and we know how our other operating budgets can be set. If everything is delayed until May, we don't know the budget, we don't know what the sticker fee would be, we don't know the impact on the operating budget and what would need to be cut to cover this cost if it didn't go through, and it would be very hard if the select board goes in the direction of setting some override amount, to be able to capture that as well. So part of this is the timing of staging this in terms of its decision-making, so we can approach this strategically versus just reactionary in the beginning of May.
Mr. Green, I'd like to go and see what we have for other commentary with regard to your substitute main motion. So I'll come over here to Julia Tregorth.
Julia Tregorth, 159 Broadway. So I guess I'm saying to both, is it a motion that was made to?
Yeah, your comment.
To keep the language as it is. So I was the chair of the transfer station study committee, I guess I still am. And we all agreed to support the enterprise fund, and I wanted to just bring a few points up that were not made by the other presentations. So regardless of our budget issues, capital improvements for the transfer station kind of always get pushed down the line, because everybody wants to fund, you know, the shiny new things and everything else. Our transfer station needs about $1.5 million in capital improvement projects that never really, I mean, they get approved, but not really. So if the, the way it currently stands in the general fund, they always get pushed down the line. And so one day, our compactor, if it's not in an enterprise fund, is going to break, and then we will not have a functioning transfer station. So that's number one. Number two, the ability to have a Hanover-controlled waste management as a fiscally responsible collective is a lot stronger through an enterprise fund, should we need to close the transfer station down the line because of international policies, as opposed to an individual free-for-all, every man for themselves trying to call private pickup service and having, you know, multiple different companies servicing the town. We did look for two years at cost-cutting measures, but the vast majority of the cost is waste disposal, it's not manpower. And our transfer station is one of the few transfer stations that has just, you can dump as much as you want, for the most part. We have twice as much trash as any other town that has a pay-as-you-throw or some sort of capped limit. So as a result, the way it currently stands, we are paying, you know, upwards of $300,000 for waste disposal, because anybody who has a sticker can dump from, I'm not saying they do it, but anybody who has a sticker can dump from, you know, their mom's house, they do a huge clean-out, I can take all that to the Hanover transfer station, and then we, as residents, are all footing the bill for that. Or I have a business, and I can dump all my business trash because I have a dump sticker. I can bring three carloads of trash to the transfer station a day, and that all gets paid by, by us. So while, you know, Mr. Freeman had said, you know, there's a huge, there's going to be a $300-plus tax increase in some way, shape, or form, we are currently subsidizing for twice the amount of solid waste removal in this town. So while, you know, an enterprise fund gives us the flexibility, should we have it either in the way it is currently modeled, with one of these models, or if we put that into, you know, a collective town-wide trash disposal? So there's that. I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Grun, you spoke on the original motion, but we have a substitute motion, so if you'd like to speak to that.
Eric Grun, 70 Heritage Way. Simple question. The enterprise fund, are those funds used only for the transfer station? And then the new proposal, would, that would be in the general account? Can that be used for anything but the transfer station? Could it be used, or will that be used just for the transfer station?
Seek an answer, Mr. Clansell.
I think the most straightforward response to Eric's question is that if it's a standalone enterprise fund, every dollar spent has to be directly related to transfers fund, transfer station expenses. And in the enterprise fund, all the revenues that would come in would go into a separate account just for the transfer station. Fees that are charged and collected for the general fund going, go into kind of a larger piggy bank, where there's not a specific, here's the revenue for this expense, which is why the enterprise fund provides quite a bit more actually transparency to the operation. And I just want to respond to one other item from Mr. Green's proposal, which, you know, I understand, it's something that I've kicked around in my head as well. And I just want to say the, the problem, or I guess the reason I was proposing, or I am proposing, an enterprise fund, is that's the only way to take the expense off the tax levy. With, if you don't take this expense and take it away from the tax levy, we, it will always be pressing up and, and putting other services now in jeopardy of, of being able to continue. So putting this money, putting it in the enterprise fund takes the pressure off the levy, and that is the key, in my opinion, fundamental factor and reason and rationale for approving the enterprise fund for transfer station expenses.
Mr. Anderson.
Steve Anderson, sorry, 1118 Hanover Street. This might be a function of just not having seen the, the motion, but can, can, I ask for a clarification as to exactly what the difference is between the motion that is being proposed right now and the main motion? Because it, it seems awfully similar, and I just want to understand the kind of vagaries between the two.
I'll start with the, just the understanding, the initial motion, the motion of the advisory committee, was to establish a transfer station enterprise fund.
It's just?
The enterprise fund. Mr. Green, substitute main motion, I'll read again. I move that the town establish a fee structure for the transfer station with the understanding that the town may collect fees for fiscal 2020, fiscal year 2026 and beyond, and that all such fees shall be deposited into the town's general fund. So I look to either Mr. Doctor or Mr. Clansell, but it appears that it's mainly about where the money goes. Does it go into a separate standalone enterprise fund, or does it go into the town's general fund? Mr. Doctor?
Well, Mr. Moderator, I mean, a question I have is how that's any different than what we have now. We, the town currently has the ability to set fees at town meeting, which is all this would allow, because we can't set fees at this meeting.
Correct.
And the expenses of the transfer station are currently covered under the general operating budget. So it's not clear to me how, Mr. Green, how your motion changes what's currently happening.
Happy to propose it.
Is that your question?
That's my question.
Mr. Green, your motion, do you have an answer?
Yes, sir. So what we're talking about, let's go real fundamental. They are talking about an accounting practice. And that accounting practice is, as the woman over there said, if we need a new belt, it's put on the enterprise account, and it hits your fee. You pay it out of your sticker. It's a, it's a very strict accounting practice, is what they are trying to do. What I am proposing is that we don't take the power away from town meeting, that town meeting, the legislative body, which you people are, sets the fee. So the executive board will come, they'll come back to town meeting, and we sit, and they'll come up with a sticker fee number, and as I said, town meeting is always right. Town meeting will say, yep, we accept that, that money goes into the general account and can be used anywhere town-wide except the water revenue. So we're getting to the same place. What I'm saying is, I'm getting you the money, based on my proposal, we're not using strict enterprise accounting practices, and, and what we're doing is we're letting the legislative body every year decide how much that dump sticker fee should be. And I would propose that, you know, I'm just saying that, I would be happy with a dump sticker fee. I, I'm all for it. We are in dire straits. I'm just as, when Joe, when the town manager did his presentation, he couldn't give you a forecast past three years. And that is the downside of an enterprise account. The downside is, the sticker price keeps going up because the costs keep going up. Let the legislative body, which is you people, decide what that sticker should be every year at the annual town meeting. That's what I view the difference to be.
Mr. Moderator.
Okay, I'm going to come, sure. If you have a direct response to that, I'm going to.
Yeah, so just to clarify for town meeting, under the current proposal, if, if town meeting ends tonight with this motion having passed, there will need to be cuts found in the budget, in the operating budget that have been laid out of 1.6 million, if the desire is to keep the transfer station in the general budget. Even if there's a possibility of a fee being set at the next annual town meeting, there is still the requirement of moving forward with a balanced budget within the Prop 2 and 1/2 limits. And as has been explained, 1.6 million is all of community services, all of community development, the library, or layoffs at police, layoffs at fire, layoffs at the schools, or some combination thereof. So it really comes down to that specific question. And I appreciate the creative options that are being put forward, but at, Mr. Green, it really does come down to that. If, if this motion that you put forward passes, there's going to have to be cuts found in order to stay under the Prop 2 and 1/2 limit for the annual town meeting in May. Because there's, there's not going to be any way to assume the number of stickers going to be sold, and at what fee, and at what amount, if that's set at the next town meeting. If we do this now for an enterprise fund? If we do this now for an enterprise fund, the select board can set that amount in advance. Those stickers can be pre-sold months in advance of the start of the next fiscal year. And we will then have a much better understanding of the amount of revenue that we will have coming in for the transfer station and adjust these services accordingly.
Ms. Ryus.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bye Ryus, and, I don't know if this.
It is.
Bye Ryus, and 1 Polly Hill Lane. I can't help but wonder why two-thirds of the voters at the last town meeting voted down an override, and tonight we're sitting here collecting that money in another way in an enterprise fund, which has nothing to do with the regulation of those monies by the townspeople at a town meeting once we do that. And that's in deference to all the hard work that's been done. I respect Mr. Green's amendment, and I know that he knows what he's doing. He served very well for many years. And I hope that we will, I'm just trying to support you, and hope that we will follow and vote that way because we need control of the money we spend. And all of these, not threats, but all of these, all of these inferences that we will lose the library and we will lose this and we will lose that is like saying, if you don't eat your spinach, you're not getting dessert. You are the dessert. You are the townspeople who make the decisions as to where money is spent, and you should have that ability every single year. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Colangelo, and then I'll come up to you.
Just want to be clear on one thing. We're, under an enterprise fund, town meeting, the annual town meeting approves the operating budget every year and approves all capital expenditures. So any notion that the legislative body of the town, i.e. annual town meeting, loses control over an enterprise fund budget is inaccurate. Annual town meeting still approves every expenditure budget, and if there are any capital purchases, annual town meeting would have to approve those as well.
Thank you. Dr. Lee. I'm sorry, I can't, I can't not call you Doc.
It's all right. Khalil Alain, 95, Waterford Drive. Speaking in support of the creation of an enterprise fund, I think, I appreciate, Mr. Green, yes? I appreciate his creativity here. I'm curious as to what would happen to the transfer station after July 1st if funding for the, from this fee only starts for fiscal '26? Would it close for a few months?
Let's see if we can get an answer for that. Mr. Green, do you have a view on that?
I, I think that the annual town meeting set a budget, a town meeting, that we're operating off of today. I, I am under the assumption that that budget is adequate to fund us till July 1st. At such time, the town will start selling stickers after the May town meeting. We get through, I, I, Chairman, Doctor, I'm not sure I totally understand your point. We have a budget. We are going to get through that budget until June 30. I don't think there's going to be any layoffs. And at that point in time, we will start collecting after the annual town meeting. So I, I don't know, maybe I'm not understanding the question, but to me, it, it seems like something we do all the time.
Ms. Corbo, you're up next.
Elizabeth Corbo, 70, Cape Cod Lane. Just for clarification, is the motion to direct the board, the select board to establish a fee structure?
Say that again?
Is the amended motion to direct the select board to establish a fee structure to operate the transfer station?
Yeah, it's, it's actually a substitute motion, but same thing. It does move that the town, the town, and that's the select board, that the town establish a fee structure for the transfer station, yes.
I don't believe that the legislative body of the town has the authority to direct the select board to do that, so I guess I would defer to town council and ask them that question. I think it's outside the scope of the town meeting's authority.
I'll seek an answer on that. I do consider the substitute motion to be in order with regard to the warrant announcement, but whether or not the town has the authority to direct the select board to establish a fee.
Right. Town meeting, uh, town meeting would not have the ability, Elizabeth, to, to direct, you know, the adoption of a fee, of a fee structure, right? So that's why this budget, well, I'll let, I can let Joe speak to that, but that's the answer to that. My understanding of this, of the substitute motion is that it's essentially saying that we, we do not want to adopt an enterprise fund and we're going to, for lack of a better term, figure it out at town meeting when the budget is presented.
Mr. Colangelo, thoughts on that?
I'm just thinking through the mechanics of how it, it still impacts the levy by not taking this out of the general fund and, and continuing on with Mr. Green's proposal, which I, I, I mean, I understand in theory, I really think you're not solving the problem, which is taking the pressure off the tax levy. And so that's why the proposal is here to create enterprise fund. I don't see how we go to town meeting under this proposed amended motion without a budget that shows 1.6 million dollars worth of cuts to stay within the tax levy. And those cuts will be as drastic as you saw presented tonight.
Just want to follow on clarification on Ms. Corbo's question to town council. So essentially, Mr. Green's substitute motion, moving that the town establish a fee structure for the transfer station, are you saying it's basically for all intents and purposes, town meeting's recommendation and the board of selectmen basically do, do or not do?
I think that's the, I think that's the most it could be. And I wasn't sure if, if Mr. Green's motion, I mean, we haven't, we, we have it drafted, but if that was his motion to establish a fee structure, then I, I think that that wouldn't, that would, that would not be proper. It would have to be a recommendation at the next town meeting, for the next town meeting.
I hear you. I, I don't think I have a, a solid ruling on, on this. Mr. Green, if you want to stay with your substitute motion, I'm fine with the wording as is. It is debatable whether you really have the power to force the select board to do it, but you certainly have the power to make a very strong recommendation, and I think the wording is fine as is.
I think what, I think what I'm trying to get out of this is a couple of things. One, to show support to the executive branch that fees are warranted, right? We hear you loud and clear. We've got a, we've got a fiscal problem. Hear you loud and clear. I think by adopting this, it would send the message, again, you've clarified that this body can't tell the board of selectmen to do it, but it would send a message to them that we're all in favor of it. Come back at the annual with fees and likely be adopted. That, that's kind of the essence of what I'm trying to say.
I think I'm coming down here to the front.
Hey, Michael Ball, 330 Webster Street. I understand the proposal, I, I guess I agree with it. The argument against it made by several gentlemen up there is that we have no idea how many permits we're going to sell, so we can't get a grasp on how much money we're going to raise through his proposal. It's the same exact thing for the enterprise fund. We have no money, no idea how many people are going to take advantage of it. So if you guys come up with a price of the permit for the enterprise fund and it's $325 and 100 people sign up, what happens then? There doesn't, there's no way to raise, you know how much money we're going to raise to pay the 1.6 or 900,000 or whatever the cost of the, running the, the dump is? So there is, that's just, I'm just saying, that's not a good argument against his proposal because we still are not going to know how many people need to pay the money for the permitting and how much it's going to cost. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator. Thank you. Mr. Hoyes.
I think one of the key differences to that is that the operating budget would need to show cuts, whereas in an enterprise fund, if we didn't get the, the participation rate, we'd have to have an alternative. Less days it could be open, we'd have to contract for private curbside pickup, there's, you know, many different options you could look at, but it wouldn't require the corresponding cuts in the operating budget. And that's what it does by leaving it in there. As others have said, town meeting in May would still be voting on the budget, which would have the assumptions of what the fee is going to be, whether it's a sticker only, a pay-as-you-throw bag plus a sticker, whatever other model you want to look at. But it provides that flexibility versus hard coding it into a budget in May that would need to require some level of cuts depending on what you were funding for the transfer station. And if those stickers were not sold, the cuts still need to be made, the budget set for fiscal year, in this case, '26.
Okay, just a quick, quick point is, I'm not trying to, I just, what happens to the enterprise fund if not enough money is?
Oh yeah, that was the first part of your question. I know Mr. Colangelo has talked to that in prior meetings, part of this. So what happens if, if not enough people sign up to even get us to 40%? Do you have a backup plan?
If it's determined that we are not able to generate enough revenue to even keep it open half a day, then we'll have to then no longer operate the transfer station, refund portions of people's money if they've paid in, and probably move to a, a curbside sort of town-wide contract and, and move on from there.
Thanks, Joe. Mr. Henderson, I mean, you've already spoken on this motion, so I'm going to ask you to defer to the person standing behind you.
Hi, General Lee Coyne, 44 Sequoia Lane. I just want to remind the community that we're not only making a financial decision here, we're making a values-based decision about what's important to us in a community. And to me, what's important to us in a community is reallocating 1.6 million dollars for our schools, for our emergency services, and putting that money back into the operating budget to be able to allocate that to the services that truly needed at this point in time. Thank you.
I think you, I think it's, yeah.
Hi, Jerry Rivera, 184 Lurchmont Lane. First-time caller. So, as I understand, we're talking quite a bit about an enterprise fund, ignorant of what happens once the fund is established. I understand we had a vote on an override and it didn't pass. The override would have solved the problems. So let's say we pass the enterprise fund, next fiscal year, can we vote on an override and pull the enterprise fund back? Or once it's established, is it established for good?
Well, I was going to come to Mr. Hoyes actually because I thought he had the best answer in town meeting prep for this, so. You're on.
I, I think if you are putting, if you're talking about the override, which you mentioned, you can transfer money into the enterprise from the general fund if it's voted on as town meeting as part of the budget. But what you can't do is reallocate things out of an enterprise fund back to things that aren't in that enterprise fund. So just hypothetically, if you were looking at a million-dollar override and decided to make it 1.2 million, you could take that 200, 200,000 and transfer it to subsidize the operating costs of an enterprise fund. But you couldn't do the opposite. If we generated an extra 200,000 and retained earnings from an enterprise, you can't move it back to the general fund. That's my understanding.
I'll, I'll follow up on the, how you get rid of the enterprise fund.
Yeah, it sounds like you can't dissolve it, is that what you're saying?
No, no. I was just making the point that if you had the enterprise fund, it doesn't have to be standalone, it could be some other way funded. But with regard to getting rid of an enterprise fund?
Right. Through you, Mr. Moderator, you, what would happen is it, it has to be, once it's established, it would have to be in place for three years. And after three years, it would come back, it could come back to a town meeting vote to revoke or rescind it. That doesn't, you know, so that's the answer.
Thank you.
I don't know who's first. I think, I think Ms. Hossi.
Hi, Kathy Hossi, 22 Gardner Street. I just wanted to maybe make a free framing of the enterprise fund, at least for the next six months. And it's maybe helpful to think of it as something to help inform us as to what to do come May or June, depending on the feedback of the town, while also giving the town leverage to either up the fees, down the fees, go to pay-as-you-throw, increase or decrease the number of days. So it's really, it's really an opportunity to provide some feedback based on what the town does to help us as we move forward. But I did, I didn't realize it's a three-year issue, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Ms. Hughes.
Hi, Rachel Hughes, 28 Stockbridge Road. I just wanted to reiterate what Julia Tregor said as the chair of the transfer station committee. I think, you know, we, we've been taking advantage of our transfer station a little bit and the fact that we have three times as much trash, she was saying, as neighboring towns around us. We don't charge fees, so of course, there, there's no reason. Of course, you can just take as much trash as you want there. So I think being able to look at the people that are using the transfer station and having them pay for it makes a lot of sense. I think the other piece of Mr. Green, you know, you gave us a little bit of a history lesson, but I think the points that Mr. Colangelo brought up of looking at, you know, the cost of trash being, of us to remove it being almost 50% more, I mean, it didn't sound like you were dealing with those types of increases when you were talking about the transfer station years ago. We're really at a pivotable moment in our history here in Hanover. I mean, we're, we have a crisis at hand. If you've been watching the, the select board meetings, I mean, we're, we can't even fund current service levels today. The schools took a hit of 10% of our budget last year, losing 30 positions. And when we look at the budget moving forward to next year, we're at a deficit. We can't even continue to fund what we have today, and we've lost so much. So when we think about things that are, you know, more discretionary, the things that are nice to have, that's our transfer station. And, you know, I don't use the transfer station. I've lived here for almost 10 years and never have, but I'll support an enterprise fund. I'll support it for my community members that want to use it. Like, I, I just don't understand what the, what the problem is because every single person that gets up here that doesn't want the enterprise fund says, well, supply and demand shows it's not going to work. And when has that ever been like a valid argument? Every time you move through it, you're like, yeah, we don't have enough demand to pay for it. So what does that tell you? You know, so I, I think looking into the long-term, looking at the different, off, the different models that the team has put together, like if you want the enterprise fund, and I think looking in the future for us, that it's only going to get harder, it's only going to get more expensive, and we're only going to have to keep taking more and more hits. And honestly, at this point, like, I don't know how many more hits the school can take. And so, you know, I love our public safety and I love all of the community, people that work in the town hall. Like, we're just going to start cutting all of our services to maintain trash. And because it's my favorite point, I'm going to add it, that we are the only community in the state of Massachusetts that has a free transfer station but still charges our youngest, most vulnerable learners in town to go to kindergarten full day.
I'll come down here.
Rick Hutcherson, 58, Ponderosa Drive. I don't know, I'm not going to speak to that point, although I agree. But I, when I heard this was on the warrant, I had no idea what private trash collecting was. I heard that we're probably going to see a $325 fee for, which I think is a great proposal. But I called one of the local transfer trash, residential trash collections, and they had three proposals. There were two barrels, one for trash and one for recycle. The first proposal, I don't know how many gallons the barrel was, but it was $29 a month or $348 a year. For the middle-sized barrels, it was $34 a month or $408 a year. And for the larger barrels, both the same size, $480 a year, $40 a month. So if that's helpful in thinking about a possible fee, then so be it.
Thank you. Mr. Doctor, you asked to have a commentary?
Mr. Moderator. You know, I've heard a few comments about overrides, and, and the advisory committee would just like to make clear that the overrides last year failed. And whether or not there are any override options going to be considered for this year, this does not address that at all. This is not an attempt to have a, have a backdoor override. This is not an attempt to shift funds from one service to another. The reality is when the override did not pass last year, we have a strict cap for our general operating budget under Prop 2.5. We applied a significant amount of free cash to the budget last year. We have significant increases in our debt obligation, in our retirement obligations to the county. Because of all of those factors and others, we cannot do what we did last year in the current budget with the amount that we can raise under Prop 2.5. That's just a reality. So the starting point is that something has to be cut. Something has to be cut. We can't do everything. This is the This is the only creative, workable option that's been put forward to basically continue everything that we have in town by moving this out to an enterprise fund. There's nothing else we can move out to an enterprise fund. If this doesn't pass, the town manager is going to have to put forward an operating budget that is balanced with in Prop 2.5, and that's going to include cuts. It seems that those cuts most likely will be the transfer station, 1.6 million. Maybe three of the select board give town manager direction to cut all of these three departments located. Maybe they say, cut police, cut fire, cut teachers. It doesn't seem likely. So we're just trying to be honest, that if this enterprise fund is not established, the almost guaranteed outcome is that the transfer station services are going to end because we cannot pay for them under Prop 2.5. We can't. That's just a reality. And we have no override. If an override happens in the future, then it happens in the future. That is not what we're using to address this issue right now.
Okay, new speaker here up top. No, no, over here first, he's already spoken.
So me?
It's you.
Frances McDelest, Abingdon, 17 River Road. So with the enterprise not going through, and if not enough money is raised, and we go to townwide with this gentleman's numbers that he just gave us for private pickup, and now we have no transfer station. Now we have people leaving all kinds of furniture around town, and so they're not going to pick it up because they probably don't want to pay the extra $125 it's going to cost for a couch, or it's going to cost for any kind of furniture, or dishwashers, or washing machines. What happens now if there's no place for the DPW to pick it up and take it to dispose of it?
Anybody care to comment on that? I don't know what happens.
Figure that out?
Figure it out. I'm sorry, but we do not appear to have a clear answer as to what happened. Sorry, Ms. Henderson, but we continue to get new speakers up, so I'll go to Ms. Lippman behind you.
Amy Lippman White, 52 Maplewood Drive. My understanding is that if we don't go with the enterprise fund, and we go with what Mr. Green is offering, then it goes into the general fund. And if it goes into the general fund, that means that we have to cut things. If it stays on a separate fund as the enterprise fund, that way we don't have to cut everything. We get to keep our schools, we get to keep our libraries, we get to keep things that we really want and need. If that's, I just want to confirm that that's my correct understanding, that the enterprise fund, taking the money out, and we have transparency, we can see what's going to happen. What happened in 2008 is very different than what's happening right now, and with our budget. Am I clear in that? Is that, is that what's happening here? Is that if we don't get the enterprise fund, and it goes, what we go with what Mr. Green is saying, it goes into the general fund, then we have to deal with the 2.5 issue, and that we are going to have to cut things? And the possibility of cutting out the entire transfer station may be an option for our schools. I just want to make sure that I'm clear on that statement.
Mr. Doctor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Pete Moralia, 710 Center Street. This is really a logical question about the amended motion, and I don't know if it rises to point of order, but it seems to me that, I'll put it in the form of a question, is the amended motion equivalent to a no on the first motion?
It's a good procedure question. No.
Because if it is...
An amended motion comes in, and we will vote on Mr. Green's, it's actually a substitute motion, which is just an amendment in total. We will vote on Mr. Green's substitute motion. If it passes, it's the motion against the article, and we're done. If it fails, we go back to the enterprise fund motion of the advisory committee, and then we consider that. So it comes second, but it still gets heard if Mr. Green's is not successful. Is that clear?
It's clear from a procedural standpoint, it's really just more a matter of, is it one of the same? Because if it's a, a no voting on the, the first motion, wouldn't that logic carry out at annual town meeting? Or you have to make the cuts, all the things that we're, that we're just talking about, we'd still have to make the cuts, all the things would still happen to be the same if there was a no vote?
If there's a no vote on both?
On, on the initial motion.
On, on Adcom's motion, yes. If there's a no vote on the advisory committee motion, then we go to the regular budget process like everybody has talked about. Mr. Green, it's been a while.
Yeah, Mr. Tom, I'd like to clarify. Mr. Doctor, I, I don't agree with your answer. What I am simply saying is that the Board of Selectmen would go back, calculate how many stickers we do in a year, do simple math and say, what do we need to charge to get 1.6 million dollars? Right? So there's no money going away. What I'm saying is, we're going to do simple math, take the price of the sticker, how many do we sell in a year, whether, let's say the number comes up to $400. That 1.6 million goes into the general account. Town meeting comes in, in May, votes on the general account. You can decide where that 1.6 million goes. You want to fund, use the money to fund half-day kindergarten, a full-day kindergarten? That's what the legislative body does. So what I, you would still be getting the 1.6 million dollars, and that's where I'm struggling with the confusion is. I'm just simply saying, charge for a sticker, charge $400 for a sticker, do simple math, and come up with 1.6 million dollars to be put into the general account and be used in the general account, versus, sorry to keep going back to this, versus having to replace the belt in the dump, it costing millions of dollars, it going on your sticker, the sticker now goes to $1,000, and it makes sense to do trash collection, and the transfer station goes away, then we pay to cap it, or pay to get rid of it, or we give it to BFI and have it become a, you know, a transition center. So, so my answer is, I believe the 1.6 goes back into the general account based on the sticker fee.
Come up here at the top.
Thomas Hallard, 79 Hillside Drive. So I got a request followed by a question. Can you put the slide up on the sword tonnage that was going to China?
Sure. I think it was the next slide.
Thank you.
This one?
Yeah, that's the one. So I have some experience with waste management, and in that, there's been very fluctuating rates across the world. So we, we've been talking a lot here about what Hanover can do, about saving costs, what we want to do with the budget. Having a flat sticker rate would be fantastic, but it's unpredictable. I mean, year over year, if you look at the, the changing of rates, we can't predict what's going to happen in the next six months. And the question that I have is essentially just, the enterprise account gives us the flexibility to do what we need to do when it needs to happen. So whether the rate of a specific material or, or, or waste stream increases exponentially that we can't predict or we're unaware of, it gives us the flexibility to be charged more or less, if necessary, based upon what the town is paying currently to dispose of those specific waste streams. But then it also puts all of that money into an account that would allow us to basically cover all costs underneath the transfer station. Is that accurate?
Seems to be.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Second person up top, and then we'll come over here.
Ken Dussinger, 44 Linden Lane, co-chair for the subcommittee, answering one of the questions that was asked earlier about what to do with the garbage if they didn't know what to have, like the couches and things of those sorts. One, we did research in other towns, and while that was a concern for them when they initially transferred away from a transfer station, every study has shown that there is no garbage that's left on the side of the roads, and there's no random couches and stuff left around. With that said, what they had found is that there are services that you can call for pickup, to come and pick up whatever that is, whether it be a TV, couch, you name it. The second option is always Facebook Marketplace and those type of avenues, so just to call that out. Really quick, not a committee member now, as a citizen. This committee, everyone up there made it very clear last year what was going to happen if we did not pass that override. They said things were going to break, things were bad, bad things were going to happen. These are those ramifications we are dealing with. Are we about to say that we are about to put the transfer station above our schools, my trash above the schools? Put it into an enterprise fund, let it, the town deal with it? These are those ramifications. Would I love to vote on it in a town meeting and have the ability to do that? Yes. But the fact is, we voted in the select board. They can speak for us. If you don't like it, vote them out, and then three years later, we decide if we want to keep it as an enterprise fund again. But the fact is, these are the ramifications for what we voted for last year, and we just need to move forward. Thanks.
Rick Porter, 20 Cedar Crest Road. Quick question on the timing as it relates to the options on the enterprise fund, because as the woman said earlier, I'm a huge fan, and when I go to the dump, I see a lot of contractor trucks back up, have lots of big black trash bags where they just throw things in. So I'm a huge proponent of the pay-as-you-go type of model, and to me, that's dramatically different, and that'll help address that situation. But as someone that, you know, want to speak in terms of favoring the enterprise fund here, I pay escrows, right? But I'd be pretty upset at my mortgage company if they decide to use some of my money that I gave them to pay for my insurance to suddenly pay for something else. And that's why I'm against paying money into the general fund to be used for the transfer station myself. Thank you. Let's go down here. Matteson.
Mark Matheson, 99 Plymouth Road. I just want to point out, we've had a lot of references to our override. Basically, what we're talking about here is having a choice to what we're going to pay for and how, if I am understanding our board quite succinctly, what we're doing is we're kind of redistributing how we're going to label the cash on a GNL, we're going to call it an enterprise fund. That means that we're not responsible for writing the checks to the general fund for other things, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but that eliminates our concern as to how and where the money is coming from for the transfer station. If I miss something, let me know, but it sounds as if we're specifically talking about setting up an account for the transfer station, so that it is off the books now, and we're not worried about what happens through until the annual meeting. If I'm wrong, let me know.
Sounds like they...
Basically accurate.
We'll go up here.
Hi, Jim O'Brien, 76 Seager Street. I'd like to move the motion, and if you disagree, I'd like to vote to move the motion.
He's moved the question. It requires a two-thirds vote to cut off debate. We're first only voting on cutting off debate. All those in favor of the motion to cut off debate will say aye. Opposed, nay. That seems to be a popular motion. We will now vote on Mr. Green's substitute motion. So you are now voting, and if it passes, it passes, we're done. If it fails, we go back to the advisory committee's main motion. Mr. Green's motion, I move that the town establish a fee structure for the transfer station, with the understanding that the town may collect fees for fiscal year 2026 and beyond, and that all such fees shall be deposited into the town's general fund. All those in favor of Mr. Green's motion will say aye. Opposed, nay? Motion fails. We now return to the motion of the advisory committee, which is to establish the transfer station enterprise fund. In other words, they moved that the town accept the article as printed in the warrant. Would anyone like to speak on this, or shall we go right to vote? Let's see who we got. Mr. Little Gill, are you coming to speak on this? Here's who you are.
Mr. Moderator. Kevin Little Gill, 21 Post Drive. I have a simple question, which is, the enterprise fund is different than sort of the current operating budget, right? The enterprise fund, for example, for water includes allocations for future capital expenditures as well as other central services, so those allocations that go back to support the administration and finance. When you actually modeled out the $325 per resident estimate, or the 1.6, what will the actual expenses in your model be with those additional allocations? Does that make sense?
Yes, I, I can answer that. So the model includes any additional revenues, direct expenses, but also the allocations that you mentioned. And they total about $190,000, and they include everything from allocated management and administration costs to share, allocation of shared expenses, pensions, benefits, things like that. So there's line items on probably 10 areas that total up to that, same as we do for the water enterprise. So it's the same methodology of taking those indirect costs that are allocations or shared costs, putting them into the water enterprise, or in this case, into the transfer station enterprise.
Includes an allocation towards future capital expenditures, as the water does as well.
That's why some of the models, scenarios are showing the green. That would be the profit which would flow to retained earnings. Retained earnings would be billed towards, or targeted towards future capital expenses. Or, as sometimes in the water enterprise, if the retained earnings get too high, they can move back to reduce the cost of, in their, in that case, the water rates, in this case, it would be the sticker fee, bag fee, whatever model we ended with. So we have clearly put those type of parameters into the modeling.
Thank you.
Not sure who's next, I think over here.
Chris Connie, 61 Stone Meadow Lane. I know I've talked to several people in town. I own and run a trash company not only in town. I've ran five transfer facilities throughout the state of Massachusetts. So getting back to one of your slides back about, and I'm not advocating one way or the other, other than I was just trying to put my two cents in...
Which slide are you looking for?
Basically, the graph that shows you how many residents you need and how much money you need to make the 1.6 million.
Can we get that table back up?
I think there was a gentleman that was down there earlier, and he talked a little about it. I think you're going to be in the red before you know it, in this respect. You have 8,000 stickers out there right now, really probably 4,000 people. You have 4,000 households, but not all the households need stickers, so there's some extra stickers out there. All right. In the town of Hanover, I charge $45 a month, okay? That's about 500x dollars a year. I pick up bulky items also. But I run a transfer facility in Rainham. My average dumping cost is over $200 a ton if somebody dumps with me. I actually pick up the town of Hanover's trash, and I charge, I think it's $120 a ton, to come in and pick it up. It's, I win it by a bid. I was the low bidder the last five years. You're paying me around $600,000. So the difference between $600,000 and a million and six, there's other expenses there at the transfer facility. I know we've talked a little bit about having one hauler come in and haul the whole town. The problem there is, you need three people for the town to hire just to work the phones. If Main Street, House Number 1 through 3 calls and says, hey, look, my trash wasn't picked up, you have to have people chase the material, you have to have people answer the call, you need two or three people in the office because of people that are sick. So I don't advocate for that way to go. I do advocate for a sticker at the transfer facility, but I don't think you're going to make the million and six up with charging either $325 or $400. I just think it's going to plummet, because what I said before is I charge $450 a year. So why would you go to the transfer facility when I can come to your house and pick up the trash, and there's no headache? I just worry about the town running out of money as fast as you start this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Back over here.
It's a good intro to the question.
You got to do name and address.
Richard Lynch, 157 Briarwood Drive. That's a good intro to the question that I want to ask the town, and that is, why do we want to be in the garbage business at all? Instead, we should be focused, I don't know how many hours you, the panel up here, the selectmen, the board, the advisory board, the study committees, how many hours you've spent studying this problem when there are larger issues to deal with in the town? Education, water, you know, there are all sorts of problems that the town has that would be of greater value to the community than trash. Second point is, you have independent, private companies, this gentleman, as well as, I got an email today from Troop Waste Management in Abington, they came out with their rates for 2025 that are competitive with what the town is stating or estimating at this point that would be the cost of the sticker. There's greater efficiency in private enterprise in certain areas, and I think trash is one of them. And they have the equipment to be able to service individual homes, households, deal with whatever you want to get rid of in addition to your trash. And it just makes, to me, no sense that the town wants to spend another hour talking about garbage disposal, so. So, that's my point.
Mr. Henderson.
Thank you. Steve Anderson, 1118 Hanover Street. I am speaking in support of the motion. I think that I encourage everyone to vote for the enterprise fund, for the, for the transfer station. Looking at the numbers, we're looking at this right now in the aftermath of last year, which has been mentioned a couple times from the stage, and already, just looking at the math in terms of bringing this to a enterprise fund, with the estimate that was given of about 325, that's about half of the increase that I would have seen last year. So I want to get it done and locked in before it's going to go up even higher. And this discussion right now is just for, is just for trash, whereas if it was going up, you know, the 800 or whatever it was going to be last year would have gone for all these other things. So my rationale is, you know, if we have the opportunity to get that particular rate locked in while it's still relatively low compared to, you know, what it could be in future, then let's make sure that we get the enterprise fund voted in so that we don't have to have that affecting the budget.
Ms. Brugnoli.
Unless further clarification is needed, may we move this question, please?
Are you moving the question? Ms. Brugnoli has proposed moving the question, which is cutting off debate, which requires two-thirds. All those in favor of cutting off debate will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Again, a popular choice. Okay, we are now going to vote on the advisory committee's motion that the town accept the article as printed in the warrant, thereby establishing the enterprise fund. Let me say that before I call this vote, we have one more question after this, and it's an important question on a fire pumper that probably affects all of us. So if you can, please, don't just get up and walk out if you were here for the transfer station discussion. Let's get through the last question, please. So with that, simple majority required. All those in favor of the motion of the advisory committee will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
The motion carries. Article Four, appropriate funds, fire pumper.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Dr.
Okay, bear with me, this is a long motion. We move that the sum of $1,150,000 be appropriated to purchase and equip a fire pumper for the fire department, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto. Said purchase to be completed and funds to be expended at the direction of the town manager, who is authorized to sell or make appropriate trade-ins, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the selectmen, is here, with approval of the Board of, of the Select Board, is hereby authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44 of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, and each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. As to our commentary, the fire chief is seeking to purchase and equip a new fire engine pumper to replace one of our four existing pumpers. This request has been in our capital plan and was scheduled to be considered at the upcoming annual town meeting in May 2025. The fire chief and town manager have recommended this purchase be considered at this special town meeting, because the price is expected to increase by 10 to 15% at the start of the new year. If approved, we would not incur the debt and any resulting property tax increase until production is complete, which is expected to take 39 months. Fire department vehicles have been consistently increasing in costs and production lead time without a future reduction in sight. The fire department currently has four engines. Engine one is a 2022 model with 16,000 miles. Engine seven is a 2016 model with 66,000 miles. Engine four is a 2011 model with 70,000 miles. Engine three is a 1997 model with 46,500 miles that was refurbished in 2017. The fire department seeks to replace one of their engines every five years on a rotating basis according to the independent review and recommendations of the UMass Collins Center. Hanover has been following this practice for the last 10 years. In three years, when production would be complete, the fire department's engines would be six, 12, 17, and 31 years old. The fire chief has expressed safety concerns if we do not maintain our five-year replacement cycle. If town meeting were inclined to approve this request at the upcoming annual town meeting in May, then it would make sense to approve it at this special town meeting to maximize cost savings. It does not make sense to delay this request by one to two years, given the immediate expected cost increase, and the additional cost increases likely to come in the near future based on trends over the past several years. The real assessment is whether town meeting is comfortable waiting three or more years to approve this request, at the expense of potential increased production costs and time, increased maintenance costs, and increased safety issues if our engines are not fully operational. While it is currently taking 39 months for production, this lead time has been steadily increasing, and we can expect that this lead time will be greater in the coming years. Even if this lead time does not increase, approving a replacement in three years means that we would not receive the engine for six years. At that time, our engines would be nine, 15, 20, and 34 years old. Resulting age of our fleet, I'm sorry, assuming lead time does not increase. The fire chief has serious safety concerns about the resulting age of our fleet under such a scenario. Our current debt payments are expected to decrease substantially in fiscal years 2029 and 2030 as existing debt obligations end. This would match well with a 39-month lead time to avoid a spike in debt payments. We recommend that town meeting approve this request, given the opportunity for 10 to 15% savings due to the expected cost increase at the end of the year, the lengthy production time of 39 months, the expectation that both the cost and production time would increase in the coming years, and importantly, the safety concerns and recommendations of our fire chief.
Questions or comments under Article Four. Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds majority to borrow. All those in favor of the motion of the advisory committee will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
I'll see hands. All those in favor of the motion of the advisory committee will raise their hands. All opposed will raise their hands. Motion achieves the required two-thirds majority. If anybody would like to question that count, please stand. Mr. Dr. So the motion carries. I'm assuming the necessary two-thirds.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Dr.
Make a motion to dissolve the special town meeting.
All those in favor of the dissolving the special town meeting will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So carries unanimously. Thanks so much for coming out.